Good evening. We have called to order the city commission meeting for the city of El Dorado, February 18th. Would we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gaines.
President.
Chris Ray Guthrie.
Here.
Chris Ray Lewis.
Here.
Chris Ray Bydway.
Here.
Chris Ray Roltz. President.
Thank you. Because our agenda would be invocation. Would you please join me in prayer? Opening. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy here in the city of El Dorado. We ask your special presence to be with our first responders as they work, as they work our, our community, make to keep, help keep us safe. We ask your special presence also in these cold weather times for those less fortunate. Ask your blessing, please, on this council to do the work you've given us to do. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next, we have pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Having proclamations, we'll move to personal appearances. We have with us tonight, I think Brad Yezel, here to speak on behalf of Gene Plummer, who's ill today. Would you join us, please, Brad?
Please keep Gene Plummer. Thank you, Council. Brad Yezel, 200 South Star. Thank you. Please keep Gene in your prayers. Can't keep a good woman down. She went to do a little doctoring Friday, which ended up in hospitalization, and they put a little new hardware in her today, but she'll be, she assured me she'd be back at work tomorrow. And I hope that's not the case. But I would like to personally invite you and cordially invite you and your families to the Second Annual Butler County First Responders Appreciation Dinner. The event is being held at the El Dorado Civic Center on Saturday, the 23rd, this coming Saturday, at 6:30. Carlson Colonial and Kirby Morris Funeral Homes are the sponsor of the event, and we have invited, and he has accepted, Attorney General Derek Schmidt will be our keynote speaker for the evening. So if you've got questions for the AG, it'd be a good time to come. The American Legion Post has agreed to serve as our color guard, and I just found out we're going to have some of our young ladies that are pageant royalty with us, which is kind of cool. So I think it'll be a great evening. Invites have gone out to all of the Butler County agencies, as well as our central dispatch and to the general public. So I hope to see you all at this annual event and to say thank you and you're appreciated to all of our first responders. And I'd also, again, like to mention and thank Gene Plummer, my event coordinator. And after having a stint placed this afternoon, she was on the phone already and wanted to know if we would be here, and she, she doubled down and covered every of us. So please keep Gene in your thoughts and your prayers as well. And thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Time now for public comment. Anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? Being done, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agendas as presented in your packets that were sent out earlier this week or late last week. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Having none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the consent agenda is presented, be approved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further question or comment? Own favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. No old business, we'll move on to new business. Department of Presentations for Engineering and Public Works.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to do this, and I promise I will be brief, but just want to kind of recap some of the things that's happened in El Dorado in 2018 that we had the privilege of having a little piece of. Here's a photo of our staff. There is six of us over there. Jay Shivers, our, our city planner, there to the left. Scott Peachin, our building official. Amanda Stahlnecker, our assistant. Eric Tharp and Josh Potter, engineering technicians. We take great pride in our mission statement. All projects have a common requirement of taking a concept through completion. Growth and continued improvements are our future, and we strive to provide comprehensive and responsible services that are in the best interest of El Dorado. Just kind of a little recap. We're broke down to three divisions, engineering, planning and zoning, and building. Hit on some of the projects on the engineering side in 2018. Saw construction of a lot of new sidewalks, bike paths. Just did some snapshots of some photos. We saw new sidewalks on Sixth Avenue. Still awaiting negotiation with Union Pacific Railroad on a crossing there. They would like the city to replace the entire crossing at our expense. So $153,000 for, in our goal, just a sidewalk crossing is, is, is difficult to swallow, but we'll continue talks with them. In fact, we'll have a representative in town beginning of the first of March that I hope to, to get somewhere with. Material's been ordered for the BNSF crossing close to Walgreens. That's sitting there on site and waiting on their labor to get that installed. Saw the installation of a multi-use pedestrian path on McCollum Road. Bike path along Country Club Road. Saw the award of the Phase Three of our citywide bike path, which is happening just south there. That is hopeful for a late spring letting via KDOT. Again, we're, we're having some discussions with BNSF because we do cross their track underneath the bridge that is the old river channel for this bike path. So there's some details we're working out with them as far as shielded shelter over the top to prevent ballast from hitting bikers, similar to what we have on the, on the rest of the bike path. Streets, we saw some street work done on Country Club Road with the construction for the new Grandview Elementary, Marmanton. We've been doing a lot of work with Kansas Gas Service. They've installed all the gas mains on Marmanton. That will be let later this spring. Oil Hill and Rocky Road has a start date around the first of March. That is to serve the city property out there, as well as BG Products and their expansion. And, and Grizzly Development is a property owner to the east as well, which will see a benefit. We, we finally got some work done on the alleys downtown in El Dorado this year and utilizing sales tax dollars for that, going through and making repairs to alleys that really haven't seen anything done to them, other than have utility cuts in them over the years. And completion of Pioneer Drive as well. Water, we had a couple of big projects this year, extending water to Union Tank Car, and we replaced a connection of a eight-inch water line at Sixth and Taylor that had been out of service for a number of years. Stormwater, also at the beginning of March, we're going to have a lot going on here this spring. You'll see the storm sewer improvements happen at First and Second Avenue. It's part of the downtown drainage. That'll go on. There's some pretty significant storm sewer involved in the extension of Country Club Road. And we also certified $321,865 in stormwater fees. Sanitary sewer, the extension to serve Grandview Elementary. We'll be talking more in depth tonight again about Grand Park Sewer, replacement of sewer on Meadow and Prairie. And did a, did quite a bit of sewer inspection to, to specifically look at our interceptors. Since the early eighties, El Dorado hasn't, hasn't, we've grown, but we haven't added any capacity to our sewer collection system. We have it at the plant, but the last capacity increase or interceptor lines that were put in were in the early eighties. So we're taking a look at that with this sewer inspection. We helped the Parks Department. We see the new parking lot at Riverview Park and got some restroom upgrades there at Mac Stadium inside the, inside of the, inside of the, the structure itself. Building division had permit values of $26,520,000 and trade, trade permits over a little over $3 million. Ten new single-family homes and three new commercial prospect projects. We did get 18 homes demolished in 2018. We looked at implementing the contractor registration, which we're, throughout this year, as we talked, we're educating those contractors about the registration requirements. When they come in and pull permit, we ask for insurance. Planning and zoning, you saw in 2018, three zoning change, four special use permits and a variance. We worked on admitting the zoning ordinances for fee increases. We had work on the industrial park master plan. Lots of going on with day-to-day with building and planning. Building is not only looking after new construction in town, but looking after code issues as well, you know, talking to tenants, talking to property owners, ensuring safety for our citizens. And planning is constantly taking calls on where can I put a fence, or can I have this shed in my backyard, or what if I wanted to run a business out of my home? So there's lots of constant communication we have with the public on those two sides. In 2019, moving forward, the Douglas Road, completion of the Rocky Road, Oil Hill. We'll see Pine Street and Vine Avenue right over here by the Civic Center repaved. We hope to see that bike path completed. Probably time to start thinking a little bit about transportation planning and, and what El Dorado's future holds as far as where we need to see growth. Just another host of projects there that we've kind of already gone over. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to do this, and if you have any questions, feel free to shoot them at me.
I guess back up to that one slide, Scott.
Yep.
A lot of those things, to me, start to, to indicate the need to, to go through updates or renewal of our comp.
Yeah.
Our comp plan. When was the last time we did a comp plan?
2009.
So 10 years old. They should, they're only good for five to seven.
Well, and, and David and I have been discussing this, and Jay and I have as well. It's, it's been a few years since we've done an update for you all of where we are, where we've hit our goals, where we've hit our strategies. And maybe some areas where we've shifted and.
Yeah.
And, and that if that's something maybe we can compile amongst us and, and engage some citizens and do that kind of on a smaller scale, a mini-update, or.
Okay.
As we go along, maybe it's time for a larger scale. But we feel good about our zoning regs and all that, but that doesn't necessarily need to be reviewed.
I, I, I think that's a great idea, going through staff level and, and reminding us what in that comp plan we've, we've done and kind of what direction we, what, what direction it sent us. And then at that time, we can decide whether different efforts necessary. Thanks.
Yep. Thanks, Scott. Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next on our agenda would be to see the final plat for the Prairie Trails edition.
How about Public Works?
Oh, Public Works. My apologies. That says "and" Public Works.
It does.
Sorry for that.
That's all right.
Okay, so I will too try to be brief. We've had lots of things go on for the last year, and, and again, we couldn't do what we do without the dedication of our, our employees, our staff, our, our work families, as we call them. We spend more time together than we spend with our families at home a lot of times. So we've got a lot of different divisions. Animal Shelter Division, you can see some numbers there on the screen for 2018, 1,239 licenses sold, pit bull applications, 2018 versus 2017 numbers. We still are working hard to reduce the number of euthanizations at the animal shelter. I can't brag on Donna and Jay enough. Donna's got a tough job at the animal shelter because all these furry little critters come in and steal your heart, and she's got a, she's got to help find them homes. And so she does an outstanding job of working with different rescues around the county, the state, the United States. We've had animals flown out of EQA, out of the airport, going places that we would have never imagined that a black dog from El Dorado, Kansas, would have ended up getting on an airplane and flying somewhere because somebody found it, saw it on the internet and, and wanted it. So, and we still work constantly on neighbor versus neighbor problems. This dog's barking, that dog's barking, he doesn't like me because I drive a red car, my dog barks at night, et cetera. So animal control officers spend lots of time working on that. Streets, the pictures kind of say it all. One of the things that I like about, about my job and the guys like about their job is you may start out in our department pouring concrete at eight o'clock on Monday morning, and by two o'clock Monday afternoon, or by roughly one o'clock in the morning, by this picture down here, you are opening up a semi that's caught on fire at the Walmart parking lot, and it's a crappy situation. It's a load of toilets, just a little pun there, no problem. Um, you don't have to laugh. So like Scott said, they've had eight, we've had 18 house demos. We've not done them all, I don't think, but have, have helped with several of those, removing debris from the river. I wish I could blow this picture up because everybody thinks it's just a bunch of sticks caught down underneath the bridge. That, that piece of tree right there is almost 60 feet long and weighs a ton. It was all that track hoe wanted to move that out of there. We had to be careful because of the new parking lot that's right there, so we don't want to mess it up. So it makes it a little challenging to get those out of the river to begin with, but with the helps of the Parks Department, our guys, we actually were down in a boat in the river and removing debris. So when you see those, they're not just a bunch of sticks down there, there's something holding them up there, so.
Yeah.
IT, we have done lots of things to improve the security of our facilities. ID badges, securing City Hall and, and other buildings with pass-in, pass-out proximity-based ID badges. New proximity-based time clocks are being added. Wireless connectivity between all of our city buildings. Any, any, any building that the city has is now connected wirelessly. We don't, we don't rely on anybody. It's our infrastructure, it's our system that is connecting the buildings that are outside of this, this cube right here, this block area, so. Completed the public media displays inside the city buildings. Those are the TVs that you see that gets rid of the bulletin boards. We can push out lots of data, lots of information to folks. And we added our, we filled our part-time IT position with Howard Goldsmith, so. Refuge and recycling. Refuge side, orange cart program was implemented. We, when we first implemented the, the recycle and the refuse carts, they have the numbers on the front of them. These guys right here. The company that distributed it, did such a poor job of tracking those numbers for us, they were basically worthless. We've now commenced working on that to try to get those back into where we can wrangle those in a mere 10 years later. But nonetheless, it is happening, so. This was a cool day here. This was trick-or-treat down the street, little bit chilly. This little guy right here, he will steal your heart in that garbage truck, and he thought that air horn was the greatest thing ever. He'd wait for a bunch of them to get there, and then he'd lay into that horn. He thought that was great. Municipal Airport, lots of improvements at the airport. The top picture up here is a, was a KDOT award, a KDOT Aviation Award, that allowed us to build a drive and put a parking area in for the T-hangers up on the north end of the airport. Pilots complained that they didn't have a place to park. We really don't want them down in front of the hangars. Makes for bobbing and weaving to move an airplane in and out when there's a car parked there is a little challenging. And so the KDOT award was for a parking lot, which they paid for 100%. We also did quite a few improvements around replacing some sidewalk, making the maintenance hanger more accessible with that, and then paint jobs on the buildings out there really spruced it up nicely. Years' accomplishments, the IT backbone, infrastructure upgrades that I talked about, implementation of the Park Master Plan work. We continue to assist the Parks Department in doing those things that we can do in-house to help keep those costs down, make our dollar go a little bit further. Our LED street light and traffic signal improvements. One of the, one of the intersections that was a dangerous, what I considered a dangerous intersection because of lighting, was Boyer and Central. It's a challenging intersection as it is for folks that aren't from the community, and for some that even are from the community. And so we went out and did a LED street light upgrade because all of those street lights were ours. And so we went out and did a, a upgrade on those, which really brightened that intersection up nicely. You, you could almost read a book in the center of it now. It's, it's not overlit, but it certainly gives you plenty of light to be able to see where you need to, to be. Continued building demolition projects, one of the, we'd not done one like this, the one up at First and Main. We had not done any in that close a proximity to other buildings or attached to other buildings, and the guys did a great job on getting that tore down and staying safe at the same time. Reorganization of our commercial trash routes for efficiency. We've made lots and lots of changes in that route, and there's more changes planned to not only be more efficient for us, but be more mindful of our customers, how many days a week they're being collected, and if they really need that, or if we can move them to make us not go down an alley two or three times a week when we may only need to go down once or twice. So we're working on that. And then security lighting plan for our parks, which will help deter vagrants and vandals. Summit Park has been vandalized, I can't tell you how many times. So there's, we've done quite a bit of lighting upgrades, tree trimmings to be able to light that up. North Main Park on the way on up, up north here, both sides of the park now are, are lit because we were starting to have vandalism issues in, in that park up there. So as you go up there, there's lots of light, so the police department can drive by and see somebody now in the, wandering around in there when they shouldn't be in there. Benefits of the projects initiatives that we have planned for the upcoming year. Crack sealing is one of our, our big things that is coming, that we're going to do in Area Four this year. One of the biggest things we need to do to help protect our infrastructure, so that's, that's happening this summer, well, this spring and summer, and then in the fall as well. We've got several O and M projects in stormwater that we, that we need to be working on and will again this summer. We're looking at refocusing some of the goals and objectives at the municipal airport. The airport is one of those things that a lot of people don't even realize El Dorado has an airport. And so we want to make sure that we are getting that word out and that we're using the airport to, to our advantage. Working on hiring, the hiring process, I don't know how many of you have tried to hire people lately, but it's a tough market. Unemployment being low has, there's, there's a good side and a bad side to that. And so when we would open a position, we would get, we used to get 30, 40 applicants. We're lucky to have five to 10 now. And so we, we struggle with filling vacant positions. We have, and we will continue to work on that, so. Replacement of regulatory signs, speed limit signs, and other black and white signs, just so you know what those are. That's going on. The Sixth Street is what he's working on right now for truck route, for speed limit signs, center lane signs, et cetera. So that's happening, and we're trying to do the best that we can do. And, and one of the things that we hear a lot is, well, I didn't, I didn't know trash day was, has changed. Well, I didn't know this, well, I didn't know that. And my question is always, how can we better get you the information short of going and knocking on everyone's door? And so we're working hard to keep our Facebook updated, doing Facebook Lives, keeping the website up to date, doing all of those things that we can do to try and keep people as informed as we possibly can. Major trends, challenges. Number one, recycle, recycle, recycle. Recycle is a struggle right now. There's no doubt about it, and we will soon be talking about those, those struggles. Budget constraints and what people expect the city to perform with limited funds. As, as budgets have been trimmed, as we have, we've tried, we have continued to try to do more with less. And that's not just less material, that may be less people as well, so. We want to try and make sure that we are able to provide just as much as we can possibly provide for our citizens. Aging equipment and fleet causes inefficiencies. An example of that was Saturday night when we were out protecting, out for ice control. For Saturday night, we lost two of our trucks because of a 1989 spreader that's in the back of them. There, our, our fleet's getting old, and so we've got a, we'll have efficiencies throughout that, using that old of equipment. We will have those efficiencies until we can get them fixed. Well, they're both fixed and back up and going today, but they didn't, that didn't do as much good Saturday night, so. We want to, we want to continue to work on that stuff so that we can decrease those inefficiencies as much as we can. Questions?
Any questions? Brad?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Brad. Okay. We will now move on to the final plat for Prairie Trails.
Mayor, commissioners, the planning commission reviewed the plat of Prairie Trails, which is the golf course on February 7th. We determined the proposed plat meets the zoning ordinance and subject vision regulations of the city of El Dorado and voted to approve that plat. Tonight, we're asking you to accept the easements shown on the file, final plat. This area, in preparation of transfer of ownership, we thought it was prudent of the city to go ahead and ensure that all easements were in place, from water lines to sewer lines to other public utilities and bike paths as well, so that we did not, not that we would, but we just didn't ensure that public ass, asset, access could remain in those places where those public improvements were made.
So I see on this plat, Scott, I'm sure there was some discussion about it, this Country Club Lane.
Yes, the first, when we, the first final plat, as it was presented to the planning commission, showed a dedication of public right-of-way for Country Club Lane. What you have there is the, the golf course, and then three additional owners that utilize Country Club Lane, and it has always been under, under an access agreement amongst all those property owners. And so in an effort to clean that up, that was one of the objectives of plating, was let's go ahead and make that a public right-of-way. And there was, there was some, some owners along there that did not want to see that occur, wanted to keep the access agreements in place. And so we felt at that time that it's not a road necessarily, necessarily that the city needs to own and maintain, that there is an existing access. That there is an existing access agreement in place and we would just allow that to continue.
So under that access agreement, it really does need to have work done to it. Do, it's up to all those property owners to pay for that?
Mm-hmm.
And it's up to them to get together and do it?
Mm-hmm.
So we really kind of, as a city, wash our hands of that road?
Yeah, it has never been a public road.
Right, I knew that and I was just, okay. Okay?
You ready for motion?
Yeah, if there are any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the easement shown on the final plat of Prairie Trails addition. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
So with this plat approved, what would be the timing that's left on the golf course, David?
The, we, one, one of the final items that was necessary for closing was the plat. Now the plat's been approved, it'll be recorded. Um, the lease agreement, we actually have received, uh, executed copies of both the contract to sell the golf course as well as the lease agreement. So Gray Life can begin operating whenever, but they are kind of closing up some items on their end. And they should be, um, getting in contact with, getting in contact with us very soon to kind of come in and move around and get, get set up. Um, it's my understanding they had a project they were working on, getting kind of closed up. And then they'll be pursuing or pivoting over here, I guess, and getting that straightened up, so.
So we have a signed lease agreement or they're, they are running the golf course as?
Uh, they, they could be if they wanted to. We do have an agreement placed for that. Um, they have not yet really, I guess, stepped into that role, so to speak.
When would we, when, they haven't given you a date when? And we don't have a closing date yet either?
Um, well, the closing date was contingent on this and they've provided an escrow check. And I believe that the other items that were outstanding have been completed. So it's just a matter of getting that kind of checked off. Um, they have not provided a date when they're planning to move in yet. We have been attempting to make con, we've made contact with them and they just haven't, I guess, been.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things I get often in questions is when is this happening? So I guess whenever we can know that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I'll reach out to them again. They've not really committed to a date yet, but I mean, I think, well, I don't want to, I don't want to say, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think they're definitely planning to get down here as soon as they can. Um, bearing in mind they have another arrangement they're trying to get finished up as well.
Okay. Thank you. Well, next we have project number five forty-five, amendment to sanitary sewer projects. Scott, this is your day.
Um, this evening we're asking you to amend a previous resolution for the, um, rehabilitation of some sanitary sewer along Grand Park. If you may recall, um, the area here, from here to here was an emergency repair. We had to get that done, um, with a kind of quick turnaround. We did receive authorization on that, um, which was, um, Resolution twenty-eight seventy-three. Um, after further inspection and what we determined at that time, our opinion was the sewer line through the rest of the Grand Park was in similar condition. So tonight we're asking you to authorize, um, additional funds to increase the authorized amount for the sewer improvement through Grand Park to two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-six cents. The previous authorization on the project for construction cost alone was fifty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So with construction costs, we're asking you to increase another hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. On top of that, we do have some contingencies built in there in case we encounter something that we're not aware of.
Okay. How, uh, any, any questions?
Are there, are sewer lines in that neighborhood the same material? Is that the only east or west? If you go east or west from there, is it, is it, are they different materials? Or are we going to be facing this again down the road?
If you go to the east, we have all brand new sewer lines in this neighborhood.
Okay.
That was a project we did a, a few years ago.
Okay.
You're going to have clay lines over here, which are the same material. Um, thi, this was kind of unique. We, we hadn't encountered a clay pipe that has deteriorated as this had through Grand Park. Don't know if it had something to do with constant saturation. It runs right along the, kind of the toe edge of the creek bank. But we had not incurred, encountered sewer like that before. Um, when we, when we found the, the league, first thing they did was went up and excavated. And they get ready and get a new chunk of pipe, put some fittings on it.
Yeah.
Cover it up and then go back and inspect it, maybe put it on the list for improvement down the road when the funds are available. But, um, this pipe, the minute we would touch it, would just disintegrate. So unlike anything, um, any of the guys in Public Utilities have encountered, nor have I seen.
Is there any plan to go down into those other, those two legs? Take a look and see what you got there?
So as, I briefly hit on in my presentation, the sewer inspection, yeah, and, and, and looking at that. These, these blue lines and, and the yellowish line here, along with the line through Grand Park are what we call interceptors. So objective of ours, um, last year and going into twenty nineteen was to camera all those sewer lines. Get, uh, see if there's any blockages, see if there's any pipe issues. We have found some minor blockages, blockages, but we have not found any bad pipe. So we feel pretty good about the condition of the pipe. We've got some blockages cleaned out. And a number of them through, um, the golf course in this area had a lot of grease. And we're working with the restaurants along Central to kind of address that, that issue we found. And then as we've got further south, um, just other material that we found in the sewer line that was removed. These, these are the lines, as you see, that follow Constant Creek, the low point in town, are these interceptors I talked about that, you know, we haven't added capacity to our collection system since the early eighties.
So the answer is no, you don't have, those aren't on the list to go look at? Is that kind of what I'm getting from that?
They're on the list of camera. You're talking, yes, the red ones. No, they are, they are not, um, if, if we encounter some issue. A lot of this is driven by, um, when they go out and Public Utilities will do an annual, what they call vapor rooting. Where they'll clean out roots or they'll go out and do preventative flushing of sewer mains. And if they encounter an issue, then they'll note it and we know, we need to look into this a little further. And to my knowledge, they haven't had any issues in that neighborhood. And, and then the other is, i- if you're having problems at your home, please call, call three two one ninety-one hundred any hour and they'll get ahold of someone. And, uh, we want to make sure it's not our problem first.
Okay, any other questions? Done, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move a Resolution number twenty-eight seventy-seven. A resolution amending and supplementing Resolution number twenty-eight seventy-three of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, authorizing the making of certain internal improvements in the City of El Dorado, Kansas. Sanitary Sewer Project Five Forty-Five.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moved in second, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero, thank you. So fourth quarter strategic and financial report from Mr. Dillner.
So you should have, um, in front of you, a copy of this presentation. Um, I am not going to go through all of the slides, that'd be very long. Uh, but I'm going to cover the high points and then if there's any questions, uh, feel free to interrupt me at convenience or at the end if you'd like. Um, and then if you look at that in the future and you have a question as well, just let me know and we'll get that information for you. Uh, but we're going to cover the high points in this. Now, this is a fourth quarter, um, strategic and financial report. This is going to be, this is the template that we're going to be using each quarter. Some of the information contained in this report, however, will, is, will only be applicable in the fourth quarter. Um, so you'll only see it really once a year because it doesn't, it doesn't change, uh, once a year. Um, another note to notice, it is unaudited, so these numbers, um, or the numbers that are in here, um, as far as the financials may change or are subject to change once we get the audit later this, uh, this year. So we'll jump right in. Uh, the first thing that I want to kind of point out, we have, we don't really talk about this a lot. We probably should talk about it more than we do. Um, the organizational values, um, that we, that the organization has kind of identified and kind of challenged ourselves to, to follow. And those are excellence, integrity, innovation, stewardship, respect and responsibility. And the definitions are, are there for your reading. But these are for the public's information, the values that kind of guide our organization and the decisions, uh, that we, that we implement on a day-to-day basis for services to the public. So one thing that we're going to start doing as, as these, um, quarterly updates goes, we're going to update you on the status of commission priorities. So you all have identified, I believe, four or five key areas that you want to kind of focus on. And so we'll be providing you with updates to those. Um, one thing that I wanted to kind of point out real quickly is since this is the first time we've done this, is some definitions. Uh, we're going to be talking about objectives and key results. These are really tangible or, um, we have, basically tasks or actions that are going to be achieved. Something that you can point to and say, they've accomplished that. So we're not really looking at super, superfluous, we're not looking at for things that we can't really say were accomplished. We're looking for hard tangible things, um, like a, like playground equipment or a final version of a study or a specific project. So that we point to and say that, that was actually accomplished. Um, planning something, preparing for something, those things aren't really, you know, you can plan and prepare all you want, but they don't necessarily accomplish things. So this is trying to focus on what is the key result, what are we trying to accomplish, um, with these things? And then the other thing is a significant progress quarter, different than a deadline, which could be hard and fast, like April fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the significant progress quarter is really a period of time when we want to see substantial or significant progress towards the specific, um, objective or key result. But that's not to say it has to be completed. It just means that we want to see substantial, um, movement towards that goal by that period of time. So the first, the first area is community image. Um, I'm going to try to go through these as quickly as I can, but feel free to interrupt me if, if you have any questions. So to the left there, you have the identified priorities that are under the community image category. Um, the first one being enhanced primary entrances. Um, the significant progress quarter for this one is the second quarter of two thousand and nineteen, with the key result being the commission to define entrances and project scope. So as we talk about that, uh, we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, uh, before we move, move with some hard and fast plans in terms of what improvements or what entrance, um, improve, yeah, what entrance improvements are we going to be doing? So we want to make sure we define the entrances and then we actually define what exactly the scope is. Does this mean, uh, just clean up the ditches around, make sure the signage is, is appropriate, lighting is appropriate? Or are we talking about a specific infrastructure improvement like medians, plantings, different things like that? So we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and further define, uh, that item. Another priority that was identified is refocus the CTC or the Convention and Tourism Committee on placemaking. Um, so the first part of this will take place in this quarter where we provide the CTC with direction and appoint, and, and also appoint members to fill that committee. We've had several vacancies on that committee, so we need to first, uh, fill that committee so that we can then task them with the direction the commission would like to go. Uh, and then the second piece of that to be accomplished or significant progress in the, the third quarter of two thousand and nineteen is that the committee would then develop a work plan based upon the new direction. So whatever that looks like at that point in time. Community branding, um, so on this one, staff will present current community marketing efforts to the commission so that you all know kind of what we're working on now and what's been done. Molly's done a really great job of doing some community marketing efforts, including four, uh, new videos that you may have seen. Um, so we're going to share a little bit about that and what the videos are and other efforts that are going on. And then from that, we're going to find out if the commission would like to see more, uh, to address marketing efforts of the community. And then if so, divine a scope of services for that, which may include an RFQ or RFP depending on how that works. So if, if that's the case, then we're looking at third quarter for that, to get that all prepped up and ready to rock and roll. Um, and then the Christmas tree at Main and Central, the significant progress quarter is third quarter. Um, primarily because KDOT would need to approve that sixty days prior to the Christmas tree being placed. The only question is real or artificial?
And Brad's cutting it down and bringing it to town.
Cutting it down?
You're cutting it down and bringing it to town.
So in all seriousness, if this is in fact a goal, we, we will need to make progress on making that happen. If it's not, then we also need to know that before we spend a lot of time cutting the tree down. So, uh, the next one is Parks and Recreation. Uh, the primary thing on this one is the implementation of the Parks Master Plan. The commission's been, uh, has been focused on that since I arrived. And then we kind of put that on, um, temporary timeout, um, while we waited for the sales tax to be passed. That's been passed. So we're going to pick up the conversation about the Parks Master Plan, um, moving forward now. So si, in the second quarter, by the second quarter of this year, we want to have the capital improvement plan, a capital improvement plan to the Parks Advisory Board. We're actually going to be starting that conversation on Wednesday. Um, we've outlined a list of, excuse me, park projects that, some of which include, uh, projects that are included in the master plan. Um, some of which are large scale maintenance items and we've kind of prioritized those out, um, based on staff's input. And we're going to take that to the Parks Advisory Board, make sure that our priorities align with their priorities. And then really start beginning a comprehensive discussion on the Parks Master Plan to include, you know, what are the current priorities? And then ultimately culminating with a discussion on funding, although that probably won't take place on Wednesday. Um, but we're going to be beginning the discussion on the capital improvement plan because then that will then be a component of the city's capital improvement plan as we begin the budget discussions here in the next few, uh, short weeks. And then also in the second quarter on the implementation of the Parks Master Plan, we'll have, we will at some point want to have a joint commission advisory board meeting to discuss priorities and funding to make sure that, um, both entities are on the same page as we begin to put those, put that plan together. Um, one of the key priorities identified in the Parks Master Plan is the tennis court complex. Uh, we are currently working with USD four ninety on, um, on that particular project as it will be, uh, a partnership between USD four ninety and the city. So we are currently working on the interlocal agreement. Uh, the city attorney is currently reviewing that. And once they, we get that wrapped up, we'll have that all to the two governing bodies for review and approval hopefully in, in the next, uh, week or so. And then once we have the interlocal agreement, we can really begin the project in earnest, which will include site selection for the complex, uh, potentially an RFQ for consultants or really RFP for contractors is really what I probably should say. And then, um, design and construction. So staff is currently preparing some information about the two sites that, uh, we've been tasked to look at. The, um, former Lincoln site, as well as the North Main Rio Park site. And we'll be bringing that information to the two governing bodies for, uh, further discussion. So that'll be an ongoing conversation that we will be go, we will be moving forward with. The ultimate goal of design and construction by the third quarter of this year so that we can have them ready for the upcoming tennis season. Um, and then another thing on the Parks and Recreation side was the staffing assessment. You'll see this in several of the categories that we'll be talking about tonight. Um, so we will be putting together a staffing assessment and associated costs so that the commission can kind of understand what that looks like from the Parks and Recreation Department's standpoint. So be looking for that in the second quarter of this year. In the business growth category, we have partner MOUs. These would be MOUs with Main Street and the Chamber. We already have the MOU with Inc. already completed, so those are the only two that are listed here. So the goal here is to have the Main Street MOU, um, significantly completed by the second quarter of this year. And the Chamber MOU or agreement by the third quarter of this year. Um, and then the Business Park Marketing Plan, uh, we are currently. We are currently working on a land policy, as well as pricing for the Business Park, and we will hopefully bring that to you all, excuse me, in March. And then with that, there'll be a marketing plan that will be implemented shortly thereafter as well. And then the Industrial Park Master Plan. Staff and PEC have been working very diligently on that, and we hope to have a presentation to you all in March, which will be first quarter of this year, to let you know kind of where that stands, and how we're planning to serve that industrial park for future development. Public safety, the third category the commission wanted to focus on. So two of these, Police Department and Fire Department. The identified priority was to get to full employment. Police Department, right now, we have positions that are open, that would put us at full employment. But we are currently five full-time equivalents short right now. So one of the things we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a task force internally to prepare a strategic plan, to recruit officers. We're gonna get input from the Police Department leadership, as well as frontline officers, to figure out what we can do, change up some stuff, maybe look at some incentives for recruitment possibilities. With the ultimate goal that we want to fill, at least two of the five open positions by the third quarter. Now, hopefully we can fill all five of them, but several of these positions have been open for a year or more. And so, we want to take a practical look at this as well. And so, two of five will be a good start, but hopefully we can fill more than that by the third quarter. It's been extremely difficult to fill Police Department positions, primarily because of the national environment, but also the local workforce environment is very tough. And unemployment is very low, which is a good thing, but it makes, it means that a lot of people aren't looking for jobs right now. So, it's a very competitive environment. And the Fire Department is a little bit different than the Police Department, in that all of our positions are currently filled, but we do want to look at whether the number of firefighters we have is sufficient for our firefighting needs within the community. And so we're going to provide a staffing assessment to you all as well. And this will provide you with options to discuss for your upcoming budget in terms of what that might look like. So we'll have that coming up by the second quarter of this year, so that you can include that as part of your budget discussions. A police facility planning discussion was also mentioned. And so what we want to do is begin to take steps to have a police facility planning discussion. This should say third quarter of next year. And the reason for that is, if we decide to move forward with police facility planning, we would want to bring in a consultant to help with those specific services, to conduct a needs assessment and a facilities assessment. And since we did not budget for those services in 2019, we would want to budget for those in 2020. And so that would be a process that we would begin, we could begin this year, but really those services wouldn't begin in earnest until next year. And then the Equipment and Technology Strategic Plan. This would be developed with input from the PD and the Fire Department, although all departments really need to probably develop an Equipment and Technology Plan as part of our Vehicle and Equipment Plan, but also the technology aspects of it. And so we'll be having a conversation about that with a presentation to the commission about what that strategic plan might look like, specifically for the PD, Police Department and Fire Department.
And that'll be in 2019 or 2020?
That will be in 2019. Yeah, the only one on this list that is really for 2020 is the Police Facility Planning. And of course, the Police Department is ongoing, but the goal is to have at least two of those positions by the third quarter of this year. And then finally, water sales was another, the final priority that the commission identified, with Lake Development Master Plan being one of the identified priorities. So, one of the things that we are currently preparing internally is an overview of lake development opportunities, to help the commission kind of understand the context under which lake development will need to happen, to include infrastructure and several other things. This issue's actually been looked at before, so it's important for the commission to kind of understand the context of that. And then, based on that conversation and what that looks like, we'll discuss the second piece of that, which is potentially moving forward with the Lake Development Master Plan, RFQ, to bring in consultant to help master plan, or prepare a master plan for the area around the lake. So that would be, right now, we're looking at third quarter of this year for significant progress in that area. And then our wholesale water contracts. On here, we have, for second quarter, we have the Augusta and Holly Frontier wholesale contracts. Although I should also add that we have a number of rural water district contracts that will be coming up, that should also be added to that, they just haven't been added to this one. So I'll update that as part of the next presentation. But we are currently working on negotiations with several entities with respect to wholesale water. And so that, that will be part of our focus for the upcoming quarters. And then finally, industrial water sales. We want to develop marketing strategies to recruit water-intensive industrial users to our industrial park. And this goes in part with our industrial master plan that was on the prior slide. So, as we get the plan for infrastructure for that, we then want to take that and develop marketing strategies to reach out to businesses that require water for their business operations and processes to attract them to our business park. So those two kind of go hand in hand. And so we're kind of waiting on the master plan, so we can really begin to develop those marketing strategies in earnest. So the other thing that we want to do as part of this quarterly update is provide you all with an update on the capital projects that are currently underway, or that are planned for 2019. There's quite a few of them, it's actually quite amazing what we have going on. So these are all divided up into three categories. You'll notice at the top, it's capital projects general. General projects are basically projects that are funded by general operating revenues or general funds. Then we have a capital projects for parks, which we've segregated those out, so that we can focus specifically on parks, as that is a priority item for the commission. And then the third category will be utilities. And those are separated because they have their own revenue source, utility rates. So I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of these details, you'll have it there before you. What we're gonna try to show you is the project name, what we budgeted. And these aren't necessarily budgeted numbers, as in they were, that's what we included in the 2019, or the 2018 budget. But in some cases, that reflects the cost estimate for the project that the Engineering Department has prepared, or another cost estimate that we've come up with. Although it could also include a number that we've put into the budget as part of our planning process. And then the spent number reflects the total number of dollars that has been spent on the project thus far. In some cases, the project has been completed, and in other cases, it's an ongoing project. But to date, that's the amount that has been spent thus far. And then, the status line is probably one, the line that's probably of interest to the general public and the commission, and that is kind of where the project stands right now. And so I'll kind of go through that real briefly on some of these projects. The Sixth Avenue sidewalks, as Scott has previously mentioned, are, is nearly completed, but we are needing sidewalks over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. And that's been the only real hang-up on that project, and quite a costly hang-up at that. The Police Storage Building, the Public Works Department has been working on concrete, the concrete floor. Particularly when we had some weather that didn't allow them to get outside very well. So they were doing that, they're doing that in phases, so that should be done relatively soon. The Martin Road, as Scott mentioned, project will be let sometime in the second quarter of this year. And then if you see projects with the checkbox, that means that they've been completed. And so that project is closed out for the most part, or at least completed. And then the Oil Hill Rocky Road, construction will begin in the second quarter of 19. And as I mentioned, the Industrial Park Master Plan will be presented then in March. Downtown alleys have been completed. The Douglas Road project has been postponed until the spring or summer of 2019, primarily due to weather. And then the runway resealing will begin in the second quarter of 19. The South Vine paving project will be completed in the second quarter of 19. And then the First and Second Street drainage project will begin construction in the first quarter of 2019 as well. Pivoting now to parks. As mentioned, the McDonald Stadium locker rooms, you saw a picture on, I believe it was Brad's presentation or Scott's presentation, but the cleanup on that project still needs to be finished. Other than that, the project is completed and ready for the upcoming baseball season. The Bike Path Solar Lighting Project, site prep has been completed, and installation is scheduled to be completed by April 19th, bearing weather, of course. Bike Path Phase 3 is requiring BNSF approval. Ballfield improvements, we're getting bids on the shade structures, we're completing dugout covers. Concrete and sod work will begin shortly, weather permitting, of course. And then the Riverview Parking, the only thing that remains on that is fencing needs to be completed around the exterior of the parking lot. And then the East Park improvements. The concrete shelter has been, is awaiting the weather. And then, once that's completed, the contractor will go in and construct the shelter, and we'll have a new shelter at East Park. And then, the last slide for parks. Grand Park, we're awaiting the completion of a couple of other park projects. We are kind of scheduling, or, yeah, scheduling these projects, so we have to wait for one of them to be completed before we can move on to the next badge. The Library Park improvements, the playground, the new playground equipment has been delivered. And now we are awaiting completion of the other park projects to get that one up and rolling. The Summer Park Shelter has not been started yet. Gordy Park improvements, the playground has been removed. If you've been out there, they've moved elements of that over to the ballfields. And the plan is to actually install those, so that siblings can have something to play on during baseball games. Meanwhile, back at Gordy Park, we are waiting for Cooperative Weather to commence construction. And you might say, "Well, you know, there hasn't been a lot of snow on the ground, but part of the problem is it's been, it's still been wet." And so, in some of these spots, if the city crews go in, they'll just tear up the ground, and it'll be a big mess. So we're kind of waiting for it to dry up a little bit, so we can, we can get there and kind of get what we need to do without tearing up too much of the ground. So it's not really about how cold it is, as much as it is about the moisture in the ground. Tennis courts, we've kind of previously mentioned that. And you'll notice here that we've budgeted $40,000 for tennis courts. That really reflects the amount of excess sales tax dollars that has been allocated to the project. That number will be increased as we move closer to get that project further along. And as previously mentioned, the interlocal agreement is under legal review right now. Central Park batting cage, the space for that batting cage has been marked out. And so again, once weather permits and we get a couple of other projects done, we'll get that thing up, so it can be ready to go for baseball season coming up. Utility projects, we've completed several of these, I won't go in through, but the Grand Park Phase 1, the street repair's been, is in progress or near completed. The sewer work has been completed, so that project is almost completed, which means that Phase 2, I've been told that the material's been delivered, and they've actually been, they've started that project as well. You've seen and probably have heard, or have been asked a lot of questions about Central and Gordy. The good news is that project is nearly completed. The bad news is, we've got weather coming, so it'll just delay that a little bit more. Friday, they were actually attempting to get that pavement completed. The asphalt plant was open, because we had enough asphalt to make it worthwhile for them to open, but unfortunately it broke down, so we weren't able to get that done. And now here comes the weather. So the last thing that's remaining on that is the resurfacing, and then that project will be completed. We know it's been kind of inconvenient for the public, and it is, it is close to being done. The Stone Road Sewer Extension has not been started, and we are in progress for the raw water clarification study that we're doing for potential economic development prospects. So those are the capital projects we have either completed, or that are underway, or will be underway shortly. If you all have any questions about any of that. So the goal will be to provide a quarterly update. It's a lot to go through, monthly, or even every other meeting. So quarterly, you'll get an update on those things, and we'll try to cover them as best as we can, to kind of give you an update of what's going on throughout all those projects. There is a lot going on, and that's a good thing. So now we get to the financial summary piece. We have quite a few funds. I'm not gonna cover all of them, but I am gonna cover a few of the financial highlights of 2018. Our assessed valuation increased to $91.9 million, that's a 6% increase. So that's, that's a really good thing. Some of that's because of new developments, or new projects that have been coming on the tax rules, in addition to incremental increases in assessed valuation from the appraisers office. We had a record sales tax receipt number for the year. We had, we collected $2.6 million in sales tax, which is the highest amount of sales tax the city of El Dorado has ever collected in its entire history. We also had the highest transit guest tax receipts, $195,000 since 2015. Although much of that could probably be attributed to the Holly Frontier's turnout that they had this year, and they're looking to have another one in 2019 as well. In addition, we, the commission approved the forgiveness of internal lake debt reserve loans, and reallocated $2.43 million across several funds, to include the Industrial Mill Levy Fund, Tourism Fund, Water and Sewer, and Refuge Funds. So that the dollar amounts that were allocated to pay that internal loan will be reallocated to allow those funds to do more in their specific areas of expertise. We initiated the sale of the Prairie Trails Golf Course Resort. The proceeds from the sale is $550,000. And the general fund reallocation will be approximately $200,000 per year that will have in the general fund that we would have otherwise transferred to the Prairie Trails Golf Course that will be able to be used for something else. In addition to that, we contracted to sell the remaining undeveloped lots in the Grether Edition for $100,000. That is contingent upon the developer receiving tax credits that we'll know more about in the coming weeks. We had legal expenses on the wind turbine lawsuit. We sold some real estate to CDH for $33,000 for company expansion. We were awarded an alternative, yeah, alternative transportation grant from KDOT for Phase 3 of our Bike Path. And we acquired some vehicles, equipment, tobacco, a refuge truck, a laser sign printer. And we did some work on the Eighth Street lift station to include a generator. And of course, our 1-cent sales tax was approved by voters. We appreciate the support to continue the current 1-cent sales tax. And that is equal to approximately $12.5 million over the next five years. To be clear, that's 12 and a half million in aggregate over the five years, not each year. So that, but that does amount to a lot of good that we can do for the community. Water revenue increased 5%, generating about $186,000. This is not an increase, a rate increase, but rather water sales were up, and we also had a readiness to serve increase that generated some additional revenue throughout the year. Similar to that, the sewer revenue was up 11%, generating $297,000, or about $300,000 for that. And then we also increased the refuse recycling fee by a buck, and that generated approximately $72,000. And the primary reason for that was to offset increases in recycling hauling expenses that we'll be talking about here, probably at the next study session. So those were the bullet point items for the financial highlights. There's just a couple of slides here. This slide here shows the assessed valuation increase in black, and then the red bars just show you the Mill Levy. But as you can see, since 2014, the city's assessed valuation has gone up quite precipitously, and that's, that's a good thing, as we continue to experience increased valuation from economic development that's finally coming due, as well as increased appraisals for, throughout the community. And then this slide, real quickly, just shows the sales tax receipt trends since 2006. It's kind of hard to see, but 2018, the $2.6 million is the highest that we've ever received. The second was 2015, and we received about, about $40,000 more from 18 to 15. This slide here is just kind of instructions on how to read the next few slides. There's kind of three things to look at. The first thing is the cash balance. A little quick life hack. If the cash balance on these slides is green, it means that we are within the target range that the commission has approved by policy. If it's red, it means we still have a little bit of work to do to get that cash balance where we would like it to be. On the revenue side, what that box says is that we want the red bar to be greater than the green bar, which means that we have brought in more than we planned to as part of the budget process. If it's less than the green bar, it's nothing to be too worried about. It just means that we budgeted more than we brought in, which isn't a problem if the expenses come in the way they're supposed to come in. So on the other side, the right-hand side of the chart is expenses. What that note shows is that if the red bar is lower than the green bar, that's a good thing, because we're spending less than we planned to spend. And then the other key thing that we want to look at is, is the revenue red bar lower or higher, rather, higher than the expense red bar? Which means are we spending more than we, are we, yeah, are we spending less than we're bringing in revenue? So you can read those bullet points, but that's in essence what it means. And so it kind of gives you a little pointer on what the next few ones, next few slides say. I'm only gonna reflect on a couple of funds, the primary operating funds, the general fund. We have a cash balance of about $1.6 million, which fits into our target range. And we spent more than we, I'm sorry, we spent less than we brought in in revenue. But we brought in a little bit less revenue than we budgeted, but that's okay, because we kept our expenses down. So, all in all, the general fund is, is doing pretty good, and we're putting money in reserve. So all in all, the general fund is, is doing pretty good and we're putting money in reserve to grow that cash balance where it needs to be. In our, in our target range, as part of our policy. Um, the water fund has a cash balance of about one point two million dollars, which is in excess of the target range. Which means that the commission can direct those uh, funds that are in, in excess of the cash or the target range. To a productive use like infrastructure or some other use within the water fund. Um, revenues were higher than what we budgeted, which is a good thing. Um, and then expenses were less than what we budgeted and more importantly, less than what we had budgeted for revenues. So all in all, the water fund is putting aside money and operating pretty, pretty well after right now. The sewer fund also has a positive cash balance of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, almost four hundred thousand dollars, which is right in line with our target range. Um, and again, these numbers all reflect year end, uh, two thousand eighteen. They do fluctuate from quarter to quarter, but right now at the end of the fourth quarter, the unaudited numbers are, are looking pretty good for the sewer fund. We brought in more revenue than we budgeted and our expenses were held lower than what our actual revenues were. So again, we're setting aside money in the sewer fund, which is a good thing for, for this fund's uh, health. And then I believe this is the last fund I'm going to really talk about, the refuse fund. Uh, cash balance, almost five hundred thousand dollars. Which is in excess of the reserve target. This fund, uh, what it does is, as you know, it saves up money. And then buys one of those really expensive refuse trucks. So the reserve balance does go down, but then we save up again and then make another uh, expense. So it is, is a planned um, process by which we do that. Um, we do, we did bring in more revenue than we budgeted and we kept our expenses lower than what we budgeted or we brought, brought in in terms of revenue, but they did exceed expenses. But again, that was because of, of um, the vehicle and, and some other items in there. So the other thing that I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, that we've not really talked about is the municipal debt uh, that we have outstanding. So I've got a couple of slides that kind of summarize that for you, uh, and for the general taxpayer. So we have three primary categories of outstanding debt, although the city only issues or only utilizes really one type of debt. And that's general obligation debt. General obligation debt is backed by the fulfillment credit of the city. Which means that in the event that revenue um, that is designated for paying back that debt, doesn't come in the way we planned. The city is obligated to raise its mill levy infinitely to cover the, the, the bond and interest payment. The good news is that's not really a, a concern, um, because we do have a bond and interest fund that supports some of that and that's supported by a mill levy. So nine point six million dollars of our outstanding debt is supported by a mill levy. And then the remainder of that is supported by water and sewer revenues. So the water fund has seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of outstanding debt. The sewer fund has five point four six million dollars for a total of fifteen point two million dollars of outstanding debt. Incidentally, that's one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars of debt per person uh, in the City of El Dorado. So we have outstanding debt, that's the total balance, but what are our payments equal? So our debt service payments is shown there in the second category on the slide. Um, for our bond interest fund, that's about one point seven million dollars a year that we pay out. Uh, for water, that's about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And then for sewer, we make a payment of about seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. In two thousand eighteen, we issued no new debt and we didn't have any refinancing of existing debt. The next two slides just kind of show that information over a longer trend line, so you can kind of see how our debt gets paid off. Um, the green bar is the general debt, the red bar is water and the orange bar is our sewer debt. And as you can see, we have a glide path to zero that gets to two thousand thirty-two um, with our current outstanding debt obligations. This however, does not take into consideration future debt issuances, um, although two thousand, uh, we do, we are expecting to issue some debt in two thousand nineteen. And then breaking this slide down, which is the total debt obligations, the next slide shows you what our annual debt service payments look like. Um, during that period of time. And so as you can see, glide paths down and with our payment being two thousand thirty-two. And then finally, one thing that we wanted to kind of show you all is our municipal investments. Where's our current money and what return are we getting on this? We have three certificates of deposit, uh, one for five point eight million dollars, one for one point three, eight million dollars and one point, or in one for about four hundred thousand dollars. And the interest rates on these are varying from two point four seven to two point two five percent. Um, and uh, most of this money was from our lake debt um, revol, or lake debt funds. That we've been putting into CDs because we're intending to take those monies and then pay that debt off. So we are keeping it into the CDs to keep it flexible and. And then um, there in the right hand, bottom right hand is our investment principles kind of summarized. Our goal is not really return on investment like you would think of your stock portfolio or maybe your investment portfolio at home. Uh, from a taxpayer standpoint, our primary goal is the preservation of capital and that means that we want to avoid permanent capital losses. And by state law, uh, we are very restricted on what we can invest in. We can't invest in stocks, junk bonds, you know, a variety of things. We can't invest in certificates of deposit, we can invest in treasuries, um, and things that are insured by the FDIC. So we're very limited and that's to ensure that we are avoiding permanent losses of taxpayer dollars. Finally, we're, and we're also max, trying to maximize the net earnings with investment in safe instruments, as I kind of described there. And then finally, we're also trying to comply with federal, state and local laws requirements uh, that the state has imposed and that we've imposed ourselves. So that's why we have, our investment portfolio is relatively boring, but also relatively safe. With that, I'll take any questions uh, about the two thousand eighteen financial report.
I have a couple of questions. Um, this is in terms of debt service and annual payments. When chart, um, said the annual bond and interest was one point seven million dollars.
That's correct.
In the municipal debt summary. And then in this chart that you've got right there, you just were at it, there's that and then go back to the bar chart, yeah. Annual debt service payments.
Oh, next one.
Yeah, do I read that right? Uh, the, the, the column.
So, yeah.
What's the one, one, two, two, three, three? Help me understand that chart a little bit.
Yeah, let me, let me address that. Um, what I tried to do was I tried to make the, what is it? The X-axis, yeah. Uh, the, yeah, the.
Y-axis.
Y-axis. Um, trying to make it simple so people can follow, but by doing that, the. Option in Excel makes it a little too uh, simple. And you can see there the, the one and then the one, the second one is one and a half, two, two and a half, three, three and a half. So it doesn't really um, do what it's supposed to do. So I probably should change that so it reflects more of like a thousands or something. Um, so that's a good, I didn't even realize that, but it, it's correct. It's just not doing what it's supposed to do on the chart. If I apologize for that, I didn't.
So, so, but those don't line up either.
That doesn't line up, does it?
Three and a half million dollars worth of annual debt service versus one point seven in this report?
The data is, is correct. I think it's just the scale of the, and unfortunately because of the way it's scaled, it doesn't look right, but I, I can.
Okay.
I'll make that change and get that chart to you so you can check it out.
Well, it's unaudited, so.
It's unaudited, that's correct. Any other questions?
Okay, no, it's Tom. Thank you. I think a comment here is, is this valuation picture is pretty interesting. That's a, you know, two thousand fourteen when we were low, valuation was just under eighty. Now we're looking at something that's close to ninety-four million.
Yeah.
Growth in property value in town is a pretty impressive uptick in the last few years. So, thank you. Moving on, next on our agenda would be city commission reports. Any wish, have anything to report from advisory board meetings or other information you'd like to share? Or business you'd like to have to talk about?
Uh, I have no reports on advisory board, but I do suggest everybody stay warm tomorrow.
So. Anybody else have anything?
I don't have anything.
I do.
Yep.
Um. So, quick question. You, with the, the sales tax money for streets. We, we made the comment at, on Douglas that that, that street would not, could not get sales tax money. Because it was an unimproved street.
Correct.
Good. Um. Something that stuck out when you were talking earlier and it, and it just, I, I wrote it down afterwards because it's sitting and it's ringing in my ears is that we use sales tax money to, to do the alley? That was, okay, it.
The improved paved alleys um, within the downtown.
Okay, okay, so that, that's, okay, that, I'm just.
We didn't go after, there's gravel alleys over town, there's Millings Alley.
Yep, yep.
Minimal maintenance alleys. And, and we have in the past had a, I'm trying to recall the. Where we've had a block say, we want our alley improved and create an improvement district.
Okay.
Just like much of original downtown did to create those alleys.
Okay. Um. Let's see. So southbound on North Taylor coming up to Central, um, there's a tree on the. SBA's property, that big pine tree. Um, it was pointed out to me this last weekend that if you're not familiar with the city. And, and you're coming up that, you're coming, you're heading south down Taylor coming up to Central. Unless you're right up on that intersection, you cannot see that stop sign. Um, and even people that have lived here for multiple years still might miss that. So um, I'd like to see, big old pine tree, right there in the media, in the, in the um, the easement. Drive down there, drive down there tonight, you'll, I, it, I did it personally. I was like, oh yeah, no, I definitely, that was something that I'd like to see taken looked at. Um, industrial park master plan. So we received an email last week saying that there has been some issues. Um, I'd, I'd really like to get a little more information on that of what is, it's been very vague the few times that I've said, I've, that you guys have sent something out saying, we're not pleased with this, they're working on this. What's really going on?
That's a good question. Um, so staff has been work, we've been trying to get the information we need to get the master plan from, completed. Um, from the consultant. And we just feel like we haven't, we haven't gotten the response that we needed. Um, we haven't got the information that we needed. And on top of, uh, probably further complicating the matter is we are also simultaneously working. An economic development prospect that could be interested in those acres. Um, but it's kind of like a, a real life dry shoot, if you will, to, you know, we need the information for this particular reason. Um, and we haven't been able to really get what we need in a timely manner um, to the, to the level of detail that we needed. And then we found, we, we found out some other information that has just made us frustrated with the process. And we've been, we've been, we've met with the company on several different occasions and staff, and staff, Scott specifically. Has discussed different concerns that we've had with them on several different occasions. And the response that we've gotten is that, yeah, we'll fix it, we're here to serve you and it just doesn't seem like it's changing much. So uh, we're meeting with them tomorrow. We're hoping to get as much information as we can. And get some of these things tied up so that we can figure out kind of what we're going to do uh, moving forward. But it, it has not been a process that we have been thrilled with.
Is this a new firm that we're using or is this?
No, this has been a firm that, my understanding that the city has used them in the past and has had good services from them, but this time they just didn't. For whatever reason. We don't know exactly what that, why, but it has been frustrating.
Okay. Um, I mean, I mean, we're, we're kind of already in this boat with them. Is that the direction that we, we're, we feel, that you guys feel is?
I, I think the most, I mean, one of these things, they did have some deliverable timeframes to hit and, and those have passed long ago.
We were supposed to see this last year.
By summer, yeah. And the most important thing for us is, we talked about this. Is we want the right data, the right information and all compiled in a manner where it's something that's just not sitting on the shelf. That the City of El Dorado spent funds on, that we can't use. We want something that we can use. So that's been a big push of ours is get it to us, but get it right, right first, you know? And, and make sure we had accurate, accurate, correct data. Last week, we just found out some information on rail that kind of changes what they were visioning on rail.
They who?
PEC, the consultant for the master plan, in some discussions with Union Pacific. Um, so we don't want to put that information, you know, we want to make sure we have the right stuff, so. That, that's part of it. We've been frustrated by the delays and, and not getting it done. As, you know, deliverable in June, they were supposed to make a presentation to you all. Um, in October, we're supposed to have final product. And then again, in November, we were supposed to have a, a draft for staff review. We, we haven't been able to do that, but we have had things like prospects along the way. That at staff, you know, we paused a little bit of thinking of master plan and let's talk about infrastructure needs to these properties. But again, you know, I just wanted to stress, we're spending these funds, we want to make sure we have the best document we can have. And don't want to necessarily rush that and say, we need a final document next week.
Well, no, I, I, I understand that, but I also, I mean, I, I, I'm, say I'm hearing frustration in your emails. But I'm, there, I'm hearing frustration in your, in the reports and the updates that we're getting from, about this, this particular project. Um, and I would, I, I think, I'd just like to, um, I don't know if, do we need to call them into the principal's office? I mean, is, is that?
That's part of our meeting tomorrow, David and I, and Linda Jolly as well. So that's part of our meeting.
Okay, so here's, here's a bullet in your gun. Is it, the commission's asking why this is taking so long and why we're having this trouble? So I guess you could, you can now officially say that.
Yep, and, and, and we've shared that with them too. The, the commission wants to see this. They want to visualize it. We need to get something to them. They have heard that multiple times.
Okay. Um.
What do you think they need to hear and get them off the butt?
Right. Is there something, something that we can do to help?
We need to.
I, I think tomorrow we'll know more. David can report to you.
I think tomorrow they're going to hear what um, yeah.
Can we cancel the contract with them at some point through this?
I mean, that's probably an option.
I mean, if they're not, if they're not performing, I assume there's a clause in there that. We cut them loose if they're not.
Well, that's what I figured too. I thought I'd at least ask.
Well, I think let's, let's, let's staff meet with them tomorrow and then based on whatever comes out of that, we'll come back and provide you with what we think needs to happen next.
You're not the first community that's had problems with them.
As I guess that could be true.
I'm just, I'm just saying that much about, I was really surprised you guys used them, right?
Low bid is low bid.
Wouldn't hurt.
Well, we do not. I mean, we select by qualifications, not low bid. And um, we have a, we have, we have a pretty good history with them. And um, and there's a lot to this as well. And, and, and I can't stress enough, we want it to be right. We want to have something we can use. Too many plans have sit on, too many municipalities shelves in El Dorado and all, all around the country. That never get used because the data is not accurate. You know, it just sits there, there's nothing that can be implemented out of it. So.
Then why do it?
Well, for us, we.
No, I mean, if it's something we can't use, then why do it? We need to, like you said, have a, have a document that's.
I don't know the truth, the wholesale say that they're not used. Sometimes the data in it is, I can get where what Scott's saying, a lot of times, a lot of times, or sometimes the data. Gets, is, isn't relevant to some of the prospects that come knocking on the door. So trying to get the data that's general enough to choose across the board. But I don't, I don't know that not used is, is, in my opinion, accurate when you think about a master plan. It may not be implemented to, to the high detail associated or, or exactly how the, the master plan says. But to think that it's not, that you don't use a master plan, it's a guide, not a, not a prescriptive document typically. But I guess I'm, I'm really interested in here and how, how, uh, how things go tomorrow. How uh, how things go tomorrow. Um, I I share the 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 attention about, you know, there's some frustration in it and I know that it's. Behind and you know, the word I heard you say Scott is is uh, we've had a couple of. Of interested parties, prospects in that, which has changed from master plan to question answering. Uh, which puts a pause on master plan. I get that, but at the same token, I know that we've been. We've been waiting a while for. So I I'm, I I hear what what everybody's saying, so but I'm curious to see. A report out of tomorrow's meeting then.
Well, the look master plan, um, the last thing on my, we we were talking about master plans not, I guess not being. When you guys were talking about hooking up internet through the buildings, um, it it brought up something that came up that I, when I read in the master plan was citywide wifi. And I know that was brought up a few commissions ago, um, is that even? Had has that been consideration talked about? Um, it it is in our city master plan.
The call plan, yeah, um. So there's kind of two pieces of that. Yes, we are looking at wireless connection between our facilities. The second thing is I've actually gotten. Uh, or I'm having Brad and the IT department prepare a. Call assessment for expanding some wifi into the downtown area. Um, so we're we're currently putting together what that might look like.
Steps forward. That's the perfect. That's all I got.
One thing I have really is uh, I I think. We had, I I I'd like to revisit the time that we intend to meet for work sessions, we had talked about moving it to five. Move to four. Can we agree here tonight on what we wanna move forward with on work session meeting times?
I think we should have this at a work session meeting.
I just like our next work session to have time or time put on today.
I would like to see it moved to five o'clock.
Who else? Could we talked about it the last one and I thought personally I thought we had made the made the decision, but um. Would like to have that decision today. Moves to, we're gonna leave it at four, move it to five. What are we doing?
Unflexible.
I'd like to see five o'clock.
I'd like to see five o'clock.
I'm cool with five, I'm definitely cool with five.
Let's just plan our work sessions from now on at five.
Nick, is that good for you? Five o'clock, does that work better?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, let's move to that, thank you. I don't have anything else, David, you have any more on city manager's report?
Uh, let's see, I talked about that already. Um, so with interest to you all, we had, we've received five hundred thirty-four surveys. Um, as of noon last Friday, um, the data is being aggregated as we speak. For all I know, Taffet's been doing it during this meeting and we are planning to have the the drawing for the free utilities at the next city commission meeting. Live on Channel Seven and we'll also simulcast it on our Facebook feed, so tune in um. So we're we're also getting the information assembled, I don't know if we'll have it ready for presentation at the next meeting, probably not, but. Um, soon thereafter, we'll we'll have that presentation so you all can know how the results came out and we can start talking about what we are going to do about it. Um, I mentioned that and then one thing that I did wanna mention in a regular meeting. The staff has applied for a K dot traffic engineering assistant program assistance program. And what that will allow us to do if we are awarded funds under that program is to look at. Um, our truck route and specific look at signage and a number of different things along the truck route to make sure that. Um, our our truck route is signed in a manner that allows it to be seen and follows, you know, existing regulations and that sort of thing. So hopefully we get those funds and we can provide you a report about what what the state may recommend. Uh, the nice thing about that is it's a program that's not used a whole lot around the state and the second thing is it's. It's a good independent third party review of of your specific problem and we can use that information to help make our truck route a little bit better. Um, one thing, are you gonna throw that up there? One thing that I did want to kind of share with you and you all are probably aware of this, uh, staff did a. Utility rate comparison and we just kind of wanted to show the results for you all to kind of know and see. So we we compared our water sewer and refuse rates with neighboring communities uh, in the Wichita area. So that our our utility customers could kind of see how we compared. The origin of this kind of stemmed from as we were getting in surveys, we had several surveys. Kind of comment on the fact that our utility rates are really high. Um, sometimes it's all relative, um, so you see your utility rate. But you don't necessarily see what neighboring communities are and that's not to say that our rates are low, but it is comparative to other regions. Or other communities in our region. So Heson was the lowest in the region with a total bill of about fifty bucks. And then we were second with about fifty-eight dollars. Uh, Newton was the highest with a hundred and thirty-three dollars and Belair was second with a hundred and eighteen dollars. This information kind of went viral in some communities, the intent was not to disrupt somebody else's community, but it was really to communicate. With our residents, um, what our rates were and how they compared with other communities. Um, I don't think anyone's gonna be moving to our town as a result of this information, um, nor do I think anyone's gonna be leaving our community as a result of this information. But I think sometimes it does help to educate citizens and kind of understand where you fit in a more macro environment, so. We do have relatively low rates, one might argue, well, you only have a few citizen cities in there, so the population sample was handpicked. I assure you that wasn't the case, they were just really cities that were came right off the top of our head and yeah, there's a few cities that aren't on that list. Uh, but we'd be more than happy to add them, but the point is really illustrative that we do have really low rates compared to communities within our region. And that's that's a strength that we would like to communicate with our public. Also, the information is based on the usage of thirty hundred gallons of water, food were prohibited and et cetera. Um, and that's that's all I had for today, um, if anyone has any questions, I'll take those down.
If this uh, K dot. Truck route deal comes back and they say our signage is fine. What are we gonna do?
We'll bring the report to you all and you all can tell us that you want twenty-five by twenty-five foot signs on the truck route and we'll do that. Um, we'll just use the information as something to help you direct us in making making determination.
Yeah, and and K dot isn't necessarily the reviewer, the K dot um, uses their funds to hire. A consultant that is a traffic engineer, so it'll be a a consultant that does that review if funded.
So they may not necessarily say that. That our signs meet or exceed K dot specs?
Well, what what we've asked just poised the question is if we could receive a grant for funds um, to review. Um, our truck route signage around town and and then um, detailing improvements that they would recommend. Or or where we set currently if we're in good shape. Um, in in that way, you you've heard Brad and I talk about it and and they'll have a uh, traffic engineer consultant. Review and have a study that's really at no cost to the city of Eldorado, we think be pretty valuable.
I'm real curious, is it what they come up with?
On North Main, you have a sign up there, there's no trucks on Eighth Street, I'm sitting on Main Street. Now, when they get to Ninth Street, can they turn left on Ninth and go across the bridge? I've been asked that before.
If if it's a local delivery to um, up there, there is no restrictions on Ninth Avenue. If it's a local, if it's delivery.
It used to, you knew it not to because the bridge was too weak for the truck to go across, but.
Yeah, that bridge can, that bridge is uh, rated as any other highway bridge would be.
But I was asked if you could put one on Tenth Street, this says no trucks on Tenth, on Main Street, so they could see that before they turn on Tenth Street.
Going east.
You're going east.
I can make the sign, yeah, I think that's something that you guys have said that's what you want done, is no trucks on Tenth.
Okay, well, I want a twenty-five by twenty-five truck route sign. I don't need, I don't need a review for that.
Okay, bigger signs, bigger fines.
Yeah, exactly. Love it. That is it, that is the slogan.
We'll get the t-shirts maybe.
Yes. Love it, Nick.
The only other thing I had was I've been told that there's some weather coming and so I thought I'd bring in our expert road uh, guides. To answer some questions that the commission may have with respect to our road treatment for the upcoming storm.
Experts are a relevant term. Um, so before the meeting, I handed you guys. And gals. Um, a a copy of our uh, snow and ice control policy that we use. Um, after the event that we had on the sixth through the eighth. Our social media friends kind of went a little nuts on the fact that uh, we hadn't done anything to help. Traverse folks traverse the city, which was absolutely not true. Well, okay, so what I what I did was I gave you guys a little bit of a uh, a snapshot of what we had to look at. Um, and what we had to work with, there's a pick a page in your packet that I handed you that says Public Works at the top. And then there's a couple lines on it that look like this. Um, during that that storm event was kind of different because we had been out pre-treating prior to that and. You've you've heard the comment, welcome to, if you, welcome to Kansas, if you don't like the weather, wait five minutes and a change. In the middle of preparing for icy roads, uh, we had a thunderstorm. Which lasted for about two hours and twelve minutes, which pretty much took care of everything we had put down when it was dry. Uh, along with the wind and if you look on that sheet, you'll see that that occurred on the seventh, the morning of the seventh. Uh, I've attached our log, our storm event log that we do each time we call folks out. Um, so it kind of details what we did, when we did it, and in this case, when we had to stop doing what we did. Um, one of the misconceptions about snow and ice control is we can just go out and put ice melt, we can just go down and put road salt down. And it immediately melts and makes the pathway clear because K dot and the turnpike did it. Um, unfortunately for us, we don't have the traffic going through town that K dot and the turnpike have out on the highways to make that road salt. Mo- much more effective. Um, once we get down below the fifteen degree mark and you can see that. After midnight on the seventh, that's exactly what happened, that salt becomes very ineffective at that point. And you might say, well, I I went out to Quick Trip and their driveway was was clear, I just had water on it. Well, that's true. Um, they use a magnesium chloride where I can't afford, nor do you folks want to raise taxes for me to be able to shoot magnesium chloride on the streets. Obviously, we don't wanna do that because road salt, chlorides, all of those are hard on asphalt surfaces. Um, so just everybody needs to understand that there's only so much you can do with that and we, and that storm, we had pre-treated. Had guys out over the over the midnight hours working, stopped them when it started the thunderstorm, put them back out on the road when it became. Feasible to do so, so we weren't wasting material. Um, our policy is we are not gonna drag plows around town for less than, less than three inches of snow. So about two, the guys start getting a little nervous and if we can get stuff blown off, that's great. Um, that with that storm in particular, uh, I didn't feel that it was gonna be a good idea to go out that evening. And try to blow that off and make those conditions much slicker when the temperatures were gonna be low again and the ice melt, the rock salt wasn't gonna do as good a job for us. So I I gave you a copy of that, I also gave a copy to Lee back here, so maybe he'll go ahead and put that out. So people kind of see what what our policy is, how we're doing it, we're not just shooting from the hip. Um, we also have guidelines from the state of Kansas for how much salt we can put on the roads. Because all of our runoff from our streets go straight to our storm sewers and straight to the river. So our our water guys go out and check those numbers for um, for the state. And they check it upstream, they check it downstream, and we need to be within tolerance of that. If I put as much. Uh, road salt out as the turnpike and as K dot does to turn those roads white. I think we'd be in, we'd probably have some issues at that point, so. During the event we had Saturday night, we had guys called in, and I didn't give you a copy of that log, but. Um, we had guys called in at six o'clock, we begin treating. Now, one of the problems that we're running into right now is the same one we run into frequently. We can't get any more salt right now. We have had salt on order for a month. Um, we talked to the company today, they're only loading DOTs, they're giving municipalities one day a week loading and it's averaging an hour a truck to load. So you can imagine that we are not the only city waiting for salt. So thus Saturday night, we went back to salt and sand. Well, sand has absolutely zero melting properties, it does provide some traction, but not after a certain point. Once you get so much accumulation uh, and moved around, you get zero, zero help from that. The other problem with sand is now I gotta go back and clean it up, so it'll take me over, it'll take me almost two weeks to get the entire town. Swept and hauled off, so those costs, we have to balance those costs out, so. Being conservative with the amount of material we still have in our barn, we have a two hundred and fifty ton barn. And I am down to probably just a hair right out of a hundred tons left, so. Um, we checked with uh, Eldorado PD a couple mornings after and they actually had ten accidents. Um, three of which were on private property, two of which were something other than a vehicle accident, so they actually had three accidents. On our city streets that they attributed to weather. So for the amount of traffic we had during that timeframe from the sixth to the eighth, three accidents wasn't too bad. Now, nobody was hurt, there may have been a bit rim or two here or there from a curb, but uh, no life was lost, no one was injured. Um, people need to real understand they need to slow down. We had guys out uh, Saturday night, like I said. Coming eastbound on Cent- on Central at Summit. Two trucks, lights on, don't pass, stay back, car gets right up in the beside, right up in beside him at Summit. And they, he's caught in that gauntlet. Unfortunately, our guys can see that, can see them, so. We've gotta now stop, let that car go through, so people just need to slow down, give those trucks room to do their job. You'll get where you're going, I promise, you can follow back a hundred feet or so, you'll be much safer doing that than you will be trying to pass us, so.
Five hundred feet.
No, I I think our trucks only say fifty at this point, but. Um, so you'll see that we did, we did go around and shoot brine today, we had the option to do that because of how this weather is gonna come in. Shooting the brine does not make the snow magically go away, it simply changes the melting point of the water. Once it, once it hits the ground, so uh, that brine will help us um. Be able to peel any snow that comes up, it'll help it not stick to the ground of the traffic paths and so. But it is not magic, it we didn't, we can't turn on the the street heaters and make that just go away like that, so. Uh, but we have, we have put down boat, a boatload of brine this week, so.
I personally wanna thank you and your department for everything you've done. And I think a lot of criticism that you received on Facebook was unnecessary. And and some of it was quite rude. I do believe your department did what needed to be done. Based on the best information you had. And just because it may not have been done like Andover or Wichita, we are not Andover or Wichita, we are Eldorado. And we do what we think is best, and you did what you thought was best, and I appreciate that effort of you and your department.
I appreciate that, I I don't, I don't mind taking the criticism, that's kind of what I get paid to do, unfortunately, a lot of times our our employees read that. And they think they've done something wrong now, they didn't do something right and and we just tell them, you know, it is what it is, people are gonna say what they're gonna say, I I. I I went around and took probably a couple hundred pictures that Saturday. Um, and and when the streets are dry, it's really obvious where we put salt at. It's really dry, you can see the white spots on the road, you can see the white spots in the in the curb lines, salt stained streets don't lie. They tell, they tell a story, it it tells us where we may have not gotten very well, tells us where we got too much at. And so um, those guys, those guys saw that and they heard that, that, you know, we we didn't handle these last couple storms. Any different than we have handled storms for fifteen years probably. And so we have to handle them differently when when those storms are gonna come in as. Uh, freezing rain, it does us no good to go out and pre-treat with a liquid. Uh, you will see us out pre-treating with the material, but the problem is, is we're running so, in my mind, critically low on. On material that we're gonna have to be really careful, so we. So we've even done some, some shooting after the fact with brine in order to go back, and you'll see us shooting this on the street when it's, when it's coming down as a mist, but again, we're changing the temper, the, the freezing point of that, of that liquid on the road. So, we're trying some alternative methods to be able to use, we're trying to help school district out, school districts in a worse mind than us, they have zero salt left. They have absolutely none. So, we're gonna do a little pre-treating tomorrow for them with some brine to hopefully help them before that, that comes in. Our first out priorities, whether they're school or not, are schools, the hospital, judicial buildings and that, nursing homes, et cetera. Um, if the guys will, they'll say, are we having school? I don't care, we're still gonna take care of it just like we are having schools. So whether Circle cancels and Eldorado cancels after or vice versa, we're still gonna go out and take care of those areas around those schools, the hospital, judicial centers, city hall, those places, nursing homes so that folks can get where they need to be, so. Um, I gave you a copy of that, um, look it over, if you've got any questions about it, feel free to, to holler at me. I, I'm happy to answer anything I can.
Thanks, thanks for your work.
Thank you, Doug.
Anything else for the go to call? If there are none, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moving adjourned.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned, thank you.